All right. I'll now call the regular city council meeting for the Lubbock City Council for March 11th, 2025. In the session, the city council will recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with and seek the advice of our city's legal counsel, 551.072, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. The city council is now recessing at 12:32 PM. City council is now reconvening in open session at 1:34 PM to take up a work session related to the Lubbock Public Health Department. I'm going to now call on Catherine Wells, our Director of our Health Department, to provide a presentation on this item. Ms. Wells?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me here today. This work session was, I believe, a request of Mayor Pro Tem Martinez Garcia after we presented the needs assessment. I have about a 10-minute presentation highlighting what we do for public health, and then I also have a presentation looking at the current measles outbreak, just to provide that update. If you have any questions, please let me know. Does that want to go up? Is it on your screens at least? No? Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. So I'm talking, I'm going to first put a frame around kind of what public health is, and then go into what governmental public health does in Texas, and then talk about some of the specific, highlight a couple of the programs at the Lubbock Public Health Department. So, big picture, public health is really the science of protecting and improving the health of all of their communities. So this is kind of that, I mean, it's really the big picture, and it's the goal of the discipline of public health, and it's really around promoting healthy lifestyles, researching, detecting and preventing, and responding to infectious diseases. And the one thing about this is it can't be done in a silo. This isn't something a public health department can do on its own. It's not something the CDC can do on their own, or the federal government. It's really a collaboration of every type of agency that touches on public health, so, or touches on health, so from our hospitals, to schools, to drug treatment, to law enforcement, they all in some way touch public health or have an influence of the health of our community. So the US public health system is structured kind of at the national, state, local levels. At the national level, you have the US Department of Health and Human Services. They're the lead public health agency, and then under them, you have agencies that you've probably heard of, CDC, NIH, HERSA, SAMSA. Those are all our main public health agencies. They do a lot of work at the national level. Then when you move down to public health at the state level, we have the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, and the Texas Department of State Health Services. So those are our two agencies that we speak to most on, from local to state. At the local level, you have Lubbock Public Health, which is the health authority for both the city and the county. And then also in our communities, we have these other entities that work around public health. So our hospitals for clinical care delivery, we have our nonprofits, community-based organizations, and educational institutions, which may receive some funding specifically for public health, or some of their work might be focused on the health of their specific communities. Moving into the Texas governmental public health system. So in the state of Texas, we have a very decentralized public health system, which means that local jurisdictions, municipalities, and counties are the ones that actually set up their health departments rather than the state government. So if you look over at Florida, they're going to have a state-run health department in every single county, and every county's going to have the exact same services. In Texas, it's kind of this dance between what local municipalities want and what the state is offering to pay for for public health services. So the Texas Health and Safety Code, Chapter 121, that's what outlines public health services in the state of Texas. They list the 10 essential public health services, and those are listed in this graph over here, and it's really around assessment, making sure that there's services available, a lot of work around disease surveillance, educating the community, and providing some problematic, programmatic services. The Texas Health and Safety Code allows governing bodies such as council and commissioner's court to enforce laws that are reasonably necessary to prevent, protect public health. Those are such things like quarantining a TB patient, are kind of where we would use public health authority. It allows them to establish a public health district. It also allows us to charge fees for different services. Some of the benefits of having a local health department really are around funding. So being an established health department allows us to receive funding directly from the state. It also allows us to apply for direct funding from the federal government. We can also apply for additional grants. We're able to charge for some of our services. So if I'm providing a healthcare service that's eligible for Medicaid or private insurance, we're able to bill those providers and bring that income in, and then it also allows us to have the choice to really build programs out for our local needs. Just here, a quick difference between kind of public health and medicine. I kind of think of them as cousins or sisters. We do, some things are very different, but then a lot of, there's a lot of overlap between the healthcare system and the public health system. Really, it's around who their focus is as their kind of patients. So in the healthcare system, you're focused much more on an individual patient and their direct needs, whereas the public health system tends to be more focused on the population. That's not to say our hospitals or medical groups aren't doing work around the population health side, or that public health's not seeing individual patients, but that's kind of where the difference is in the two disciplines. So a little bit about our health department. So we are a city-county health department that was established about two years ago. There is, in our city charter, the Lubbock Board of Health, which is written as an advisory group to city council. City council appoints those individ, you appoint six of those individuals, and the county appoints three. Our current staffing levels at the health department are 52 full-time FTEs. We also have six temporary staff, and then we have six part-time contracted professional staff. And these are people like Dr. Cook, because we need a licensed medical doctor to be able to do some of our services. We have to have a laboratory director, and these are people that work like maybe one or two hours for the health department. So small contracts, but we need to have those licenses in place to have those services. Our activities goes around disease surveillance, clinical services, so providing immunizations, our STD clinic. We have a pharmacy and a laboratory, emergency preparedness, our health promotion, which are the staff that go out into the community and work with different partners, and do a lot of work around coalition building. And then we have the substance use prevention and treatment program. So I'm going to highlight three of these just for time. If anybody has any additional questions about any of those other services, I'm happy to either sit down with you individually or answer those now. First one, and this is really core to governmental public health, is disease surveillance. So the Texas Health and Safety Code requires that communicable diseases be reported to your local health department. There is a list of about 45 different conditions that must be reported to local public health. Measles, which we'll talk about later, is one of those that is immediately reportable because it is so contagious. Most of the diseases on the list are really things that can be transferred or transmitted from person to person, that we can have a public health intervention to actually reduce that transmission. The health department receives about 12,000 reports per year of different communicable diseases. 4,000 of those actually require follow-up from staff. So that means staff person actually has to call family member or doctor's office to do some kind of follow-up on that disease. And these are non-outbreak years. This is a normal year. And then investigations typically include a patient interview, or a parent reviewing a medical chart, determining exposure and infectious period, so where did they maybe get this disease? You know, who else might have been exposed, providing education, and then looking for others who may be sick. And then when appropriate, if the person doesn't have a physician, or they can't get back to the physician's office, the health department does provide post-exposure prophylaxis if it's available for that condition. We provide 24/7 consultation. That phone's been ringing off the hook with measles. Our nurse over the weekend took, I think, at least 30 calls from different providers concerned about measles. And really, the goal of this program is to disrupt disease transmission. So we want to reduce the occurrence of diseases in our local community. Another key part of governmental public health is our public health emergency preparedness. So this is the link between our public health system, so our hospitals, and kind of the emergency management part. These are, this is my team that's always talking to fire EMS, the hospital emergency rooms. This is the group that plans how you would do mass prophylaxis of a community. They talk about the public health needs. If we were to have like an airline crash or something, they would be the people that were talking to the medical examiner's office and working with the hospitals, making sure patients are transported, identifying additional needs that need to come into the community. And they also prepare lots of plans. So we work a lot with emergency, our emergency preparedness, to make sure that all the health and safety plans are correct for the city and the county. So their goal is to strengthen the ability of our community to respond to any public health threat. So those might be infectious diseases, but also natural disasters. What would be the public health needs if we had a tornado? If a lot of people had cuts and we were worried about tetanus, public health would be there making sure that everybody got a tetanus vaccine. They develop the plans, like I said, and then they also coordinate our regional medical operations center. So this is the emergency managers from our hospitals, nursing homes if they have one that does the coordination between the city and the state, and then up to the feds if we have medical needs that need to come into our community, or if another community needs help, they can ask for assistance from our health department. And then the third program I was going to highlight is our behavioral health. This is one of the programs that I've, that's really grown over the last couple of years, and it's been really great to be part of. The behavioral health program does a lot of work to connect people at risk for substance use disorders and getting them into treatment. Some of their grant money allows them to provide some financial support to people throughout their inpatient and outpatient journey for, while they're seeking substance use treatment. They also use our LBK Community Network to link people to different services, and we're in the process of moving that to the Echo platform, which is the same platform that the homeless communities are going to be using. So we'll have that integration on the ground, so our nonprofits and other programs don't have to look at two different systems for sharing information. So that's the treatment side, and then the prevention side is really about training, getting into our schools, really offering substance use prevention information out to the community. They also run our annual Source to Solution Conference, which is every, like October, that was started by Councilman Randy Christian about five years ago, and we've done that every year except for one year with COVID. So great opportunity, offering professional training for individuals, for counselors and other people that work in substance use. To go a little bit into our budget, so the health department budget is made up of multiple funding sources. I receive about 27 different grants, so there's a lot of moving parts with that. We receive $1.8 million in general fund from the city of Lubbock, so from you all. The Texas Department of State Health Services provides us about $450,000 in general revenue. And then we also receive a lot of pass-through dollars that come from the Department of State Health Services, but they're actually federal funding that's allocated to the state, that then the state gives to local health departments. So a lot of times you'll see, when I bring grants and contracts to council, a lot, they're mostly Department of State Health Services, but those are both a mix of federal and state funds that are going into those programs. We receive a large amount from Texas Health and Human Services for our behavioral health program. That's $4.5 million. That program also pays for people to be in treatment, so a lot of that money gets passed from the city health department to our treatment providers out in the community. We've also get some special grants for different projects, that kind of around $500,000 a year. And then a place that I've been really trying to grow is our special program fees. So this is really looking at how can we better capture all of the services that might be reimbursable by Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, to make sure that we're billing those appropriately. So that's a space that I think will continue to grow. We collected about, it's estimated to be 200,000 this year. I'm hoping we'll be closer to 400,000 next year, and I think that can continue to grow if I'm allowed to continue that work. And then I also wanted to mention, right now is a city-county health department. The county provided $3 million for our building, and that was in exchange for five years of public health services. So we're still in that five-year time period where we're providing services kind of at no additional cost right now to the county until that agreement gets renegotiated. And just talk briefly about where our general fund budget goes. A large portion, 40%, or actually 60%, goes to compensation and benefits. And these are staff positions, mostly management positions, or management assistant position that aren't tied directly to a grant. So that allows us to have those staff and those services available, or that oversight of the department. We've drastically reduced the amount of supplies and maintenance being charged to general fund. I think the supplies went down by like 75% this last year, and that's because we're utilizing the revenue that we're getting from these insurance providers to offset the cost of all of the supplies, that they aren't hitting the city budget. And then a large portion, 30% of our budget, is all of the scheduled city charges. And then kind of our challenges, or my challenges with the department coming up is, one is kind of our community needs, which we really talked in depth about during the review of the community needs assessment. We're also seeing increases in communicable diseases, so responding to this measles outbreak is a significant staff drain on the department. We've been operating seven days a week since the last week of January, and our department's not necessarily staffed for that. So staff have really stepped up and put in extra hours, which is appreciated. We still have lots of issues in this community around syphilis and HIV. We've seen a 500% increase in syphilis, so that's one of my long-term goals, is to really see how we can work on reducing that. There are going to be some funding challenges with public health. We've seen level grant funding by the state and feds. There's a lot of movement right now working to increase some of that funding. For example, our immunization program has been the same $254,000 now for probably 20 years. They have not increased that grant. There's a lot of push with the Texas Legislature right now to see whether or not they will increase that grant funding to local communities. The federal restructuring's a big unknown. A lot of our grants are written through 26, 27, but depending on what happens at the federal level, I just don't know. I can't predict that at all. And then limited investment in local public health kind of by the state of Texas. And that's kind of the, that's the conclusion of the health department. Do you want me to move into the measles real fast?
Anybody want to ask questions at this point? Or you want to move on? I just, I had one question. I just, what happens at the end of the five-year period? You said you will renegotiate the agreement with the county to provide public health services to them?
That was the intent, I believe, when that was signed.
Okay.
But that was with the previous council. But I think we should look at that.
All right.
All right. And then...
Mr. Harris, you have a question?
Ms. Catherine, how much, if any, money is being spent, or do you have any people with what I would consider boots on the ground for this mental health and homelessness, homelessness that we have going on here? Do your department have anybody specifically for that that's out trying to tackle that problem?
Yeah, so that would be our outreach and prevention programs. We have five or six community health workers, and then some community health worker apprentices. That's really their goal, is to be out working with all those high-risk groups.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
A couple of quick questions. I wanted to verify something I heard you say earlier. The Board of Health was established in the city charter.
Yes, sir.
And so that would, I guess, say that public health department was established by the city charter. So the city of Lubbock has a public health department because of the city charter, and to couple that, once we have a health department, these 10 state requirements become a part of your charge?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed also in your budget slide that 20% to 25% of your total budget, only 20% to 25% of your total budget comes from local funds?
Correct.
And half of your total budget is spent on behavioral health, and that's mostly reimbursed services?
Yes.
Is that a fair statement also? Okay. One other item in, in the local budget, the 1.8 million that comes from local, approximately 30% of that is internal services?
Yes.
Which are services that the city provides for you, which mean, which is legal, IT, insurance, facilities, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So just wanted to kind of put those things out there for everyone to hear that these are, you know, when we, when we talk about these numbers and these dollars, they're not all just out there available for you to utilize maybe as, as much as we would like for every dollar to go directly to the patient or to the citizen, that's not the way it works.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll move into, quickly into the measles update. I know we don't have much time. Just quickly, what is measles? And really, it's a respiratory virus, so that's why we're very concerned about it, because it's highly infectious, and it can easily be transmitted from person to person with coughing and sneezing. And measles actually can hang in the air for up to two hours. So if, say you were in an elevator, and there was somebody that was in a measles case, a measles case in that elevator that was infectious, for the next two hours, everybody that enters that elevator is actually exposed to measles. It is that infectious. If we had a room full of 10 people that were all unvaccinated, nine of them would come down for measles. We don't see that with other diseases. Flu, colds are not that infectious. Our symptoms are cough, conjunctivitis and runny nose, high fever, and then this rash that's very distinct, starts at the head face and goes down through the torso. Our greatest risk with measles, and this is why we're very concerned about it, are kiddos less than five years of age, pregnant mom, pregnant women, and then the immune-compromised. And I really want to stress that measles is not an easy disease. It is not a mild disease. You hear people say, well, it's just a rash, and it is far more than that. And we've unfortunately had one death here in Lubbock at our hospitals, and then there was another death from measles reported in New Mexico that's still in fact, that's still under investigation. And, you know, I don't want to predict, but there are lots of sick children that are presenting at the hospital, so, I mean, I don't, it will not be surprising if we have another death. Very high fevers, painful rash. One in five unvaccinated people are hospitalized, and most people are hospitalized for dehydration, pneumonia, and encephalitis, and encephalitis is a swelling of the brain. Five out of 1,000 children that are diagnosed with measles are going to get pneumonia, and we're likely to see one to three child deaths per 1,000 cases. So very serious. This is a quick chart of kind of the number of measles cases across the US. When they introduced the vaccine in 1963, we began seeing huge drops in the number of measles cases. The measles cases we're seeing on the South Plains is the first time in 21 years that we've actually had measles cases in this community. And it's because of that vaccine is why we don't have, we don't regularly see cases. This will be probably the largest measles outbreak in 25 years. We are already at the second-largest measles outbreak in the last 10 years, and that's why there is so much media attention and people wanting to know what's going on here. There's a lot of concern about these measles cases spreading to other parts of the United Just a quick case count. We're looking at 253 cases, and that's mostly centered in Gaines County. We have three cases here in Lubbock, and then they're starting to see cases up in the northern panhandle of Texas. And they're, they're watching for cases in communities in Oklahoma, and even moving up to the Canadian border. Our first case here in Lubbock, we received two, notification of two children hospitalized. They had no recent travel, and the contact tracing done by our staff at Lubbock Public Health identified multiple sick family members in Gaines County, and they, and then we realized that there is even more sick families. I don't think we'll ever know the source of this measles outbreak, because it was already circulating in Gaines County when public health was notified. And this graph over here shows kind of our Gaines County cases, but as you can see, we're starting to see more cases in other communities in West Texas. I know there's only three cases in Lubbock, but there is a big impact on our Lubbock community, especially our medical providers. 50% of all of the cases actually come into Lubbock for medical care. So that means that we have lots of potential exposures to our community. Management of severely ill cases, especially pregnant women and children by the hospitals, so a lot of burden on our hospitals. Lots of notification to community members trying to give prophylaxis to people that were exposed. So it's a good thing that we're still at three cases, but that could easily jump if measles were to enter an unvaccinated community. The key to stopping this outbreak is really vaccination. The MMR vaccine's been around for 50 years. It's 97% effective. That's our best way to stop things right now. The other options are really getting people to stay home when they're sick, and stay home when exposed. These are just kind of the responses that we've been involved in, but the health department established the incident command structure with the state and South Plains Public Health Region to respond to this, done a lot of outreach in schools and daycares, PSAs with some community leaders. Lots of vaccine efforts. We're able to give free vaccine to anybody who wants it at the health department, a lot of support to our medical providers, and luckily, the state was able to establish measles testing here in Lubbock as of last week, which has really helped speed things up. That's at the public health laboratory over at Tech. And that's my quick measles update. Any questions?
Mr. Collins?
Just on this vaccine and immunization question, public health department provides immunization?
Yes, sir.
Approximately how many per year?
We provide about 3,000 per year, just in a normal year, and then this year will be significantly more. We've already given 300 doses in the last two weeks just for measles.
And where's that funding?
That funding's from an immunization grant that covers some of our nursing staff, and then the state gives us free vaccine that's not actually in the budget to be able to administer to individuals.
And so this, this immunization grant then comes from the state, and it's approximately...
The 254,000, this is the one that's, drives me nuts because it hasn't increased in 20 years, but we're expected to respond to something like a measles outbreak with very little state funding.
So 254,000 that hasn't changed in, in 20 years? 254,000 that hasn't changed in 20 years? What's our population growth in Lubbock in the past 20 years? Hundred thousand folks?
Probably somewhere around there.
Thereabouts.
Plus the cost of a nurse.
A little under 100?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you as well, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a brief five-minute break and then we'll begin with our regular council meeting. Okay. We're going to start here in a few minutes, but before we get underway, I've got to take a moment of personal privilege to invite our Assistant City Manager, Eric Rahino, up front. Eric, would you step forward? We just want to wish you a happy birthday tomorrow. Eric is meeting the big 40 head-on. Eric, we're really proud of your service to our city. We've got a little something to give to you. There's no cash in here, Eric, no cash, but...
Thank you.
All our best wishes for you and... Tomorrow, tomorrow. He's still 39 today. But Eric's, like I said, one of those guys, every morning, no matter how early I get here, he's always in his seat, working hard and doing a great job. So I appreciate him very much. So, all right. I'll now call us back into session. We'll take up our, we're commencing at 2:12 and today, and we'll take up our ceremonial items. First, I'm going to call on Reverend Jim Haiti with St. Paul's on the Plains Episcopal Church, the most beautiful church in Lubbock.
Oh, thank you.
And he'll lead us in our invocation, followed by our mayor pro tem. He'll lead us in our pledges. Would you please stand?
I'd share with y'all scripture reading. Psalm 119 is the longest chapter in scripture. I won't read all 176 verses, but here are seven of them, beginning with verse 129 of Psalm 119. "Lord, your decrees are wonderful; therefore I obey them with all my heart. When your word goes forth, it gives light; it gives understanding to the simple. I open my mouth and pant; I long for your commandments. Turn to me in mercy, as you always do to those who love your name. Steady my footsteps in your word; let no iniquity have dominion over me. Rescue me from those who oppress me, and I will keep your commandments. Let your countenance shine upon your servant and teach me your statutes." Let us pray. Lord, we are thankful for the gifts of living in this land of freedom in the United States of America and in the great state of Texas. We ask you to bless Donald, our president, and Greg, our governor, and bless all the legislators, national and statewide, and all the courts that help to administer justice. And we pray for our wonderful city of Lubbock. And we ask your special blessing upon our mayor, upon our city council members, upon all those who work for the city. We especially remember and ask for safety for all of our first responders, that they may do their jobs well and safely. We pray for all the citizens of the city of Lubbock. We ask you to help us to continue to make Lubbock a great place to live and to raise families. We pray for all of our medical personnel during these times. We pray also for our educators and our students and all those preparing with joy for a week of spring break. And we ask your travel mercies for them and bring them back home safely to us. And Lord, we do ask for rain to bless our parched land during these times. And we ask you to send such gentle showers as will nourish and, and benefit the land around us. And Lord, you hold all things in the palm of your hand. Let your face continue to shine upon us and help us always to seek and do your will through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, let us join and honor our American and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. I didn't mean to demean any other houses of worship in this city, but I grew up on 16th Street, and I looked down that street, you know, as a kid, and saw that church at the end of it, and it almost made this Baptist become an Episcopalian, almost, just for how beautiful it was. So, thank you very much. All right. We're now going to take up citizen comments. According to the Lubbock City Council rules, any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the city council regarding any mass matter posted on our city council agenda can complete a sign-up form provided for the meeting, no later than 2 o'clock this day. Remember, as you come forward, as I call you, for those who filled out that form, to give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments, and I'm going to call you up according to the agenda item that you have chosen to spoke, to speak to today. A warning bell will sound when you have 30 seconds left, and then again when your time is up. So first, we're going to begin with people who want to make citizen comments pertinent to agenda item number 7.4, and I'm going to call up Marcus Hurd. Mr. Hurd, if you'll come forward.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak to y'all. We got to speak several weeks ago and at a zoning commission also. I am opposed to the zoning change from the Christian church to the mighty, mighty car wash. I live directly across the street from where the car wash, car wash is going to be positioned. And I've got some concerns. I know there's supposed to be a beautification fence or shrubbery or trees of some sort of landscape, but I don't, driving around and looking at other mighty wash, car washes, I'm not confident that they can keep that looking attractive over several years. I've noticed some deterioration on some of their landscape and some of their, their properties. And it may look attractive year one, maybe year two, but I just don't think they're going to put the time and effort into keeping it attractive. The other thing is, all the new car washes they've built, they're, they're very tall structures. The fence is only seven foot. So I'm basically going to be looking across the street and seeing the top of the A-frame of that structure. It's not, it'll block out the cars and something like that, but it's not going to block out the A-frame of the structures. So I will see it. The other thing, the tunnel for the car wash is parallel to Indiana. So me being north of that on 96th Street, I'm going to be looking straight into that tunnel. So all the noise coming out of that tunnel in order to process the car washes is going to be directed right at my front yard. It's not going to be directed toward Indiana or toward the church. It's going to be directed due north. So I think there is going to be a noise issue. When I did go by some of the other mighty wash, car washes, I pulled across the street from several of them and rode down my windows to, to make like I was in my own front yard. I was far enough away, and I could still hear the vacuums. For a car wash to be profitable, they're going to have to be doing more than one car at a time. I mean, ever so often. So a lot of times, there were seven or eight vacuums running at the same time, and it is a loud noise. It's not, okay. And that's, and the devaluation of the value of my home is I'm also concerned about. So, anyway, thank you.
Rhonda Calk. Ms. Calk? If I said that correctly?
It's Calk.
Calk, thank you, Ms. Calk.
One of my former students to your right. Good, are you? Okay, I live actually in the townhouse that is adjacent to Marcus's. And we face, I've lived there since 20, 2003, over 20 years. So I bought the place then. And the, have you, have you driven down 96th to see the layout and everything? I don't know if you have or not, but we are, you know, our front door, our front is facing where the car wash is. And, you know, it's, it's been a great place to live, and it's quiet, and I'm worried about the noise from the blowers and the, all the, you know, the cars and all the traffic. And Indiana is just like inundated with traffic, you know that. In South Indiana, they drive like maniacs and motorcycles, and that's loud enough, and then we're going to have to add on to that a car wash. And, I mean, I, I'm all for progress. I'm all for the church selling that rezoning for, well, it's on for, I guess, res, high, uh, high-density residential right now. And I think, I think that would be good personally. But I also looked at the map of the mighty car wash locations, and there, I saw six, I believe. Somebody said seven, but I believe ours will be the seventh, but I'm not positive. But all these car washes are in southwest Lubbock, all of them. South, southwest, and west. There aren't any car washes in northeast, north, or east, these mighty car washes. I mean, I, I don't know. I, I'm not a builder, I'm not a, you know, an investor in anything like that, but I, I mean, that, it looks to me like they'd be better placed somewhere else than Lubbock. But like I said, I'm not an authority on that. But I worry about, I mean, everybody on that block, we, like from, there's like the first three, they're duplexes, but they're townhomes, and we each own individually. And the, we're, the first three are all owner-occupied, which those are the ones that will be affected by all the noise and all the whatever goes in with the car wash. I did drive... Okay. Well, anyway, I drove over by a couple of them, and, and the noise didn't seem that bad. You know, I drove by one on, on University, which was a lower profile than the one on, by the Loop. But it seemed noisier than the one on the Loop. But several people are, we're just older. I'm retired, I've been retired from teaching since 2010. And, you know, I like my little place, and I love my neighbors, so I hate to see it all go down, go south.
Thank you, Ms. Calk.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Billy Stelzer.
Good afternoon, councilman. My name's Billy Stelzer, and I own a duplex on 96th, like the others. We are concerned with the noise that the car wash is going to develop. There's a lot of senior citizens that live there, and they've lived there for several, many years. If one of those senior citizens was to fall outside, their spouse or their neighbor could not hear them, yell for help if they fell because of the noise from the blowers of the car wash. We're also concerned about children that live on the 96th Street. The other side of the duplex that I have, there's a family that lives there, and they keep their two-year-old grandson. They have a fenced-in play area for him to play. And what's this noise going to do to hear his hearing? I have tinnitus, and I know how bad that is. And I worry about other children. There's another family that has four or five children that lives in the duplexes. And it's going to affect them. It's going to affect their security of being outside with more vehicles going in and out of the car wash. And we really would appreciate you considering all of this. We have worked so hard, and I know y'all work for us as citizens. And it's your duty to take care of us as well as us to take care of y'all. And if there's any other way that we could do this, we would appreciate your help by not having the car wash in this residential zone. I know the zone has been changed, but we'd appreciate it if you would consider us and do a nay vote on this. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Stelzer. Rachel Myers.
I'm Rachel Myers. My address is 9609 Ithaca. I am the mother of the four or five kid family, it's actually five. But I live in the cul-de-sac that's just going to be on the west side of where they're planning on putting in the car wash. I really appreciate, well, first let me say, very pro-business. I work for a local businessman. We've been here for a long time. We love Lubbock. We love our house. We love our neighborhood. And I'm a mighty wash subscriber, so it's nothing against the car wash. In fact, I washed it today on the Loop where it was not disturbing my peace. But, all that said, specifically for Rain Tree, not to mention for my neighbors, but also for our family, I work full-time, but I work from home. I've worked from home pre-pandemic. It's been a long time. I've worked from home for 15 years. We picked a house that was in a quiet space. Now, I know we have Indiana, but it's Indiana. And as the city grows further south, we expect more traffic that direction. But we did not anticipate the noise or the traffic that would come with a car wash being near our home. I decided to look up on Realtor.com a heat map of the noise, and the intersections on 82nd where there are other car wash locations go from a light yellow to bright orange. And that's not just because of the car washes, I'm sure, but the increased traffic, I would be willing to venture, does make a difference. And I would like for y'all to please consider that. And also, we, we homeschool. I homeschool my five children. So we are home all day, and they play outside in our backyard, which would be right up next to the car wash. And again, I appreciate the wall that they are saying they're willing to build. That will be helpful, but it's, it's simply no replacement for a quiet piece of property in the grand scheme of things. So in addition to the sound, there's also the safety, as mentioned. I have children that are ages 13 to 4. We do a good job of keeping them in their parameters. However, that doesn't mean I can keep other people from coming into our space. It is a safety concern of mine that we're going to go from a quiet little corner of a neighborhood to a busy commercial in-and-out constantly situation. So those are the things I'd like to bring to your attention and request that you please not approve this request. So, and I'm sorry, I would stay for the rest of the meeting, but I do have to go pick up my kids. My husband is pinch hitting for me, which I really appreciate. Who also works for a local business company? We love Lubbock. No offense to mighty wash, but we, we just really like our peace and quiet. So, thank you, thank you, thank you for all y'all do.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Harold Lewis.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to, to talk to you folks. My name is Harold Lewis, and I live in a townhome at 3404 96th Street. We purchased it 13 years ago. And when we investigated and looked at the neighborhood, we thought this is ideal. We have a nice little church across the street. It's a nice townhome. And we felt we were safe because the church owned it, and we figured they might build some kind of an educational building or something there. But that didn't turn out right. I respectfully ask that you reconsider your decision on, on the property over there. I don't know, they, they tell us all things that tell us how nice it's going to be and how they're going to fix it up, and how you can, they're going to build a nice decorative fence with green space in there, but put lipstick on the pig and it's still a pig. And I just, I just think it would be a detriment to the appearance of the neighborhood. We enjoy it as much as we can with the traffic on Indiana. But in the afternoons, a lot of times, even on the weekend especially, if there's a lot of traffic going south on Indiana, they try to get through that light down there, and it backs up, sometimes back beyond almost 95th Street. It'd be impossible for anybody to come in and out of that car wash if they could on Indiana. And so when that traffic's that bad, they divert down 96th Street to Joliet and go around it, which increases the traffic on Joliet, I mean, on Indiana 96th Street. But I really, I really have been to a couple of them and looked, and the only two that I've looked at, I didn't have much of an objection to because they were not next to a residential... And the only two that I've looked at, I didn't have much of an objection to because they were not next to a residential area. And the one on 114th Street is, is a large one, but there's no residential areas. One on 81st Street, Verizon is next door. It's not next to any, anything. So I just feel like it'd be a detriment and a danger. Plus, it kinda, it'll take away from the vanity of our house. And I, I'll be 90 years old here pretty quick. My wife's a little, little younger, but we both anticipate to stay in this townhouse the rest of our life. It just depends on how things work out with the, with the commercial designation. We'd like to see it stay with a high-density residential. Uh, but I know the city, very frankly, the city would like to have the taxes off that property. And, uh, so we'd like to have a break in our house and our values too, but it's probably gonna go down. But thank you very much for the opportunity and for listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you too. Now we have a number of people who want to speak on item, uh, agenda item 7.6. So as I call you up, and I'm gonna kinda give you, uh, the next person who's gonna be coming up after the person I call, so you can get ready. First, I'm gonna call up Tyler Perlmutter and after Mr. Perlmutter, Ivan Naronho.
Uh, good afternoon, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor. Um, I will keep it, uh, real brief. Um, I just wanted to, um, draw the Council's attention to two updates we've made since the last meeting. Um, and they are, uh, in regards to parking, as we understand that this is a paramount concern for the project. Um, so previously, the project had 315 parking spaces. We've increased it to 421 spaces. Um, we achieved this by, uh, increasing the parking deck from four stories to five stories and then moving the pool that was on the top floor of the, of the parking, um, to the interior courtyard. So, uh, we view this as a benefit, uh, in, in twofold. One, you increase the parking and the ratio. And two, the pool will now be more interior. Um, and, you know, we, we're, we're positive that will, uh, help with noise, um, concerns. So that's what I wanted to add today and, uh, thank you for your time for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, I'll call up, uh, Mr. Naronho and after Mr. Naronho, Sally Conroy.
Mayor, Council, pleasure to see y'all again. Happy Tuesday, is it? Tuesday? Um, just a quick, uh, a couple of quick points really quickly. Um, I wanna talk about, uh, I mean, this is a zoning case. Like I said last time, this is a zoning case. So we're trying to figure out if it is reasonable and if it's rational for us to change the den, uh, the changes from low-density residential to high-density residential. Um, uh, like I said last time, I, I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense with all the surrounding high-density or low-density residential around the area. Um, additionally, making this vertical mixed-use, there's just so many issues with that. Um, this, putting a coffee shop does not make this vertical mixed-use. Like it's a, it's as far as I'm concerned, 2,000 square feet. Um, amidst a giant, what, project that spans a couple of blocks? It's, it, it's unreasonable. It doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Um, and also the, there's still the issue with the 50-foot setback. Um, so we'll hit on that. Um, moving forward, I also wanted to, I think it was, uh, Councilmember Harris who made reference to this is gonna help economic development and everything because this will increase property taxes. And I mean, I guess, yeah, this will be a good overall measure. But when you take into account, I guess, the safety and the what, general welfare of the citizens, um, and you kinda balance that out over the amount of money the city can draw in, I'm not entirely sure that's necessarily the best thing. And I think there's plenty of instances of areas that can get economic development, like this downtown, for example, that could really use a major revitalization. I don't think that this area right here where it is, is where you need to be hitting. Um, and then that takes me to my last point, just about the safety and welfare. Um, yeah, I've talked to a good amount of people about this, a good amount of alums, a good amount of parents, who said, "There is no chance that I would ever send my child to a school where they would be staying in a dorm where every single day they would have to cross nine lanes of traffic back and forth across, you know, cars whizzing by at four, miles of 45 miles an hour." I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what the speed limit is there. What is it, 35? I'm not entirely sure. Um, my point I'm making is that you can put, uh, you can put crosswalks, you can put safety things. Heck, you could even put, build a bridge, um, to have students cross over. But it's, it's just not sensible, I guess, is at the end of the day. And you can have your cars, um, you know, 420, is it 420 now new, new spaces? That's an improvement, but it's still not great. And I would just ask you to do better. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Conroy and after Ms. Conroy, Ty Kreidler.
Hello. I'm Sally Conroy. I live at 2826 22nd Street. I'm here again today for a final plea. Because of the placement of this high-density student housing on 19th, there's no safe place for students to cross onto campus. As I last said, as last time, my son, as I said last time, my son was hit by a car crossing 19th and Boston in, in 2013. He's walking his bike because he had a flat tire, making him a bigger object for a driver to see. Nonetheless, a car hitting. And, um, uh, he was flipped over a car and totaling his bike. He was bleeding and he was taken to the hospital by ambulance. My son Nathan said that cars were aggressive and daring the pedestrian to get out of their way many times. Back in 2013, there were fewer students going to Texas Tech. This 585-bed apartment complex will add multiples of pedestrians onto the crosswalks leading to campus. My son was hit by a car in broad daylight, what happens when a student crosses at night. The more pedestrians, the higher the possibility a student will be hit by a car. This is no tiny road. Please remember this is a seven-to-10 lane highway. Cars turning left have a limited time with turn hour, uh, arrow. And the angle of the view makes it difficult to see pedestrians on the crosswalk. The reputation of Tex- Texas Tech would be also at risk. Parents search online to compare colleges for their child to attend. All kinds of information pops up on the internet, including the number of pedestrian injuries at a university. This area does need some help. It, um, it's a prime location and it's great and, and it could be a prosperous development. Couldn't the, the city team up with the property owner? If the owner's open to help, perhaps the city and owner together could hire urban planners to implement a structural vision, a plan, then seek businesses that will enhance Texas Tech, the students, and the parents who visit them. What I'm trying to get across here today is you don't have to settle for a high-density student housing just to fill a spot. Our neighborhood is excited to have business that enhance Lubbock and Texas Tech under the current zoning rules. Remember, this location does not save, provide a safe path for pedestrians to get onto campus. I read in the AJ, uh, article that Texas Tech Student Council is against this project and has asked the city council to reconsider. I too ask you to reconsider and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conroy. Mr. Kreidler and after Mr. Kreidler, Holly Humphreys.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, good to see y'all again. It's been too long. I was very interested to hear what Sally Conway said last time because that echoed in many ways something that I experienced. When I did the math, I figured, well, there's cars turning left, there's cars turning right, there's cars going straight, east-west, and going north-south. I said, "I cannot have the capacity to be able to understand that without AI. So I'm gonna J-Walk." How many of you went to Texas Tech University and crossed university and J-Walked? Not too many people are raising their hands, but if you went to Tech and you parked over there, you damn sure did. Excuse the French, because that's what you had to do. This is what's gonna happen on that street. And so be ready for it. What I would task the city council to do is be prepared because what you've heard and the blessing from your community, your citizens, have echoed some of the things that are gonna be challenges down the road. So we've kind of had a little exercise in productivity, I think. Our councilman particularly has heard many of the things that maybe we need to shore up in terms of law enforcement, parking enforcement, traffic calming, things of that nature. And he has been solicitous and sent an email my way saying, "Hey, let's talk about this and maybe we can get the city manager in on this and begin some discussion." But that's not why I'm here today. What I'm here for today is I haven't really been convinced of the need for a zoning change. Well, Ty, that's very amorphous. Well, I've heard many amorphous things here in this arena that says, "I like this project." Well, that's a little amorphous, too. So, yeah, it's, I, I don't think I've seen the need for this. I've heard facts and figures, tech's growing, this and that. And in fact, we know the evidence to the contrary. Also, the scale of the structure, the massive scale, zero lot line. I haven't heard that term mentioned once. They've taken a building and they put five stories and they zero lot lined it. What sort of aesthetic value does that have? Does that make you feel calm and wondrous in the open spaces of West Texas? No, it makes you feel like, "Oh, I'm in College Station. That's the last place I wanna be if I'm a Red Raider." Ain't that ironic? The other thing is safety. We've echoed safety, traffic safety, pedestrian safety. But the other thing that I haven't heard one thing about in this building is sustainability. On campus, when they build a building, they talk about a 50-year building or a 100-year building. How long is this one gonna last? Thank you.
Ms. Humphreys and after Mr. Humphreys, Mr. Settler, Roger Settler.
Members of the city council, Mayor McBrayer, and our city manager, once again, I stand before you. This time I have a script. I hope to gallop through it in three minutes. As a resident for 29 years and member of the Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association, founded in 1968, whose bylaws were codified in 1974, state in Article 2, "The purpose of this association shall be to protect and preserve the integrity of the single-family nature of the community and to promote diversity in the neighborhood." Therefore, I protest this proposed zone change because to erect a high-density residential building targeted to over 500 college students not only skews that demographic diversity that we aspire to embrace in our neighborhood, but to do so violates the majority of the provisions of the Unified Code, the Unified Development Code, hereafter referred to as the UDC. The provisions of the UDC address four areas. The proposed zone change, in my way of thinking, re, it violates the provisions in the areas of, number one, comprehensive plan of development. The proposed zone change violates two out of four of those provisions. Number one, implementation of the priorities of Plan Lubbock 2040 and the mandate to provide for orderly growth and development. How is stuffing over 500 college students in 1.6 acres a manifestation of orderly growth and development? Number two, the mandate to provide for orderly growth and development also impinges on Area B, protect the public safety and environmental quality of Lubbock. So this now reflects four out of four provisions that are going to be violated by this zone change. Number one, providing adequate light and air because multi-story buildings block the space, light, and air from properties around them. Promoting a safe, effective circulation system for traffic. And we've heard many, many concerns about that issue. Providing safety from fires and other dangers. And in this case, safety impinges on how many students are going to have to cross 19th Street following a regular course of classes. Classes are scheduled at Tech on the hour and on the half-hour. And that means you're going to have, out of 500 students living in an HDR, up to maybe 200 trying to all cross at the same time. And that's going to create a problem. Uh, last but not least, about, am I out of time? Okay, um, last but not least. Um, I didn't get all the way through the other provisions, but you all took an oath to support the state of Texas, the Constitution, and by extrapolation, the codes of the city of Lubbock. And this particular zone change violates too many provisions of the Unified Development Code. Thank you.
Mr. Settler and after Mr. Settler, Abby Kleppa.
Honorable mayor, honorable members of the council and staff. Uh, I'm proud to be here today as a life, almost lifelong resident of the historic Broadway corridor at 2120 Broadway. I'm Roger Settler, president of the Congress of Neighborhood Associations, which has, represents 10 neighborhood associations across the community and which has voted unanimously to support our neighbors in the Tech Terrace Neighborhood Association and in opposition to this project. We are proud to be joined by the Texas Tech Student Senate, which by a vote of 27 to 6 expressed its opposition to the project. Three minutes isn't a long time, so I'm going to confine my remarks up to what is the highest and best use of a property. This is a term we hear bandied about a lot in planning and zoning meetings. I submit to you that the highest and best use of this property is what is there now. Historic preservation of the Capoeja Building, which represents the old St. Mary's Hospital. I myself was born in that facility, as was Michael Ward that you're familiar with, and Lubbock's own buddy Holly. Many of us were born in that structure. It is part of our history. The Lutheran Center has served students for decades and is also a historic structure. As we drive by the property, we notice a park-like appearance. Why isn't that the highest and best use of the property rather than a high-density zoning, which we all know in our hearts is too big for this tract? We in Historic Overton and South can address to you what happens when you take a single-family home. And this process began in the 1960s. It, uh, the councils then would take a single-family home and insert five to 10 apartment spaces vertically on that single-family lot. The result was traffic congestion and deterioration of the neighborhood. And we know that this property is likely to be flipped to an out-of-town owner, absentee landlord. We, and this has contributed to the decay in Overton North. That will result in a vast slum over there. And yes, that's what Overton North is destined to become. Is that economic development, I say to you, to develop properties which are going to be flipped and then become slums? No. In conclusion, I would like for all those who are opposed to this project to once again stand. Stand up and express your opposition to this. Uh, it is the purpose of elected representatives not to carry the message of the city to the people, but rather carry the message of the people to the city. Honor your mandate from the people. Our honorable mayor received a huge mandate in his landslide victory. Take, take note of that and know that the neighborhood movement is alive and well and we ask that this inappropriate project be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Settler. Ms. Kleppa and after Ms. Kleppa, Melissa Grimes.
Um, Abby Kleppa, I'm at 20, I live at 2627 21st Street. And I've lived in the neighborhood in that sort of general area for a little over 30 years. And, um, the last 11 years at this address. Um, I'm neither a politician nor an orator, so I'm going to try and use my little sort of semi-script here. But, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Maybe I should have done so at the last. But, um, it is with humility and respect that I approached you in my email three weeks ago. And I believe that you were supposed to be stewards of our local resources, civic engagement, and our communities. I also trusted, obviously somewhat naively, that you all would want to respect the concerns, our concerns as citizens. our concerns as citizens and neighbors in this city. Our, my neighborhood, the Tech Terrace area, has made it very clear over and over again during the last two to three years that we do not want a high-density housing establishment in or at the edge of our predominantly single-family residential neighborhood. Over and over, my neighbors have expressed the same concerns, made the same arguments, and pressed you, as city officials, to preserve and protect our neighborhood and community as you would your own. I sat at the zoning meeting five weeks ago and heard lots of, oh, better this than nothing, that the neighborhood people will never be happy, such things as, oh, we got to get, we wouldn't want a car wash in there or McDonald's in that space. We got to go ahead and do this. At the last city council meeting, three weeks ago, when this came up, no one of you voted with our neighborhood or neighborhood residents. One abstention is not a vote for the neighborhood. I heard each of you dismiss our instruments, our interests and concerns over the interests of investments, investors, owners, and project men and women. It's a good project. We need something here. Lubbock needs this on the tax rolls. I even heard you, Mr. Harris, suggest that we here in Lubbock need to get with it, get more modern, and that we're so behind the times. May I remind you, sir, that, in fact, you are the one who is behind the times. You hold on to a notion that community people do not in any, know any better. You seem to negate and deny that putting a monstrosity in or near a residential neighborhood is destructive. That legacy that we are not, we have not learned, that shows that we haven't got the lessons of neighborhood destruction. It is exactly what has been done in cities across the country in the latter half of the 20th century, when city governments, states, and federal authorities drove highways through residential neighborhoods, and in particular neighborhoods of people of color, all in the name of progress. So, neighborhood after neighborhood, family upon family, we're all disturbed, uprooted, and urban blight set in. We are, have seen here in Lubbock, older neighborhoods experienced the same. I know I'm out of time, and I just would ask that you show and act with a little bit more respect for the people of our neighborhood and of the city, as we are the ones who have many years of investment, minor as it might be, in the Tech Terrace neighborhood. Excuse me, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kleppa. Ms. Grimes, after Ms. Grimes, Cindy Snell.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of the council, city staff. Not making less of you. Just thank you for all, that all of you do. I have worked and owned a business in the Tech Terrace neighborhood for 35 years. I've owned a home for nine years. I am speaking today on behalf of my neighborhood, in my role as president of the association. While we understand that we all want a successful project to happen on this premium land, high-density residential, as described in the UDC, puts us at risk. It puts us at risk for very high density and low parking requirements. I know that you understand from a vocal majority of our neighbors that this does not sit well. While I say that, I also want you to know that there are many in the neighborhood who are not necessarily against the project. We are against what it means in terms of the high level of density. We, the current project at 584 beds will exceed the student housing project in any in Lubbock in terms of the density of that project. We have appreciated the outreach by Pine Crest, and I have been working with them closely on this project. We appreciate that they have offered more beds and still, while still keeping the building at five levels. We are hopeful that they will continue to work on those numbers. I have reason to believe that they will work to get the density of beds down. This is significant to us because of the risk and how the UDC is written currently. In other words, they don't have to do it, so we believe that they will do it. As a community, we must be able to rely on a thorough review of this project during permitting. This would include implementation of traffic solutions that render the area safe for pedestrians, cyclists, those using electric scooters and/or motorized scooters, accessible traffic, as well as driving traffic. We're not sure how this can be achieved without a suitable pedestrian safety island. And since one does not currently exist, we're not sure how that can happen once this gets to permitting. We must trust those in our city's planning department to pay close attention as the project, such as this, moves forward to permitting. We do appreciate the statement from the Senate at Texas Tech University. These voices matter. In closing, I encourage us all to consider and weigh what are we willing to sacrifice in terms of our neighborhoods for the sake of economic development. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Ms. Snell, and after Ms. Snell, Connie Goodwin.
Thank you, council and Mayor McBrier, for hearing this again and allowing us to come back. I certainly appreciate what everyone in the unit area has to say. I did live there for 33 years, and I did go back to graduate school and cross that street many times. And I know that throughout the years, we've had so many students living in the unit neighborhood and crossing the street, and certainly appreciate what she just said about the density. But I do think that anyone going to Texas Tech is going to be looking out for their own safety, and I do think that this project is going to benefit Lubbock in such a manner that we're going to have, as far as an economic, as far as addressing the highest and best use. I don't know how we can do better on that track. It is on the edge of the, of the unit development. I understand that. But the safety of the students that live in the apartments crossing 19th, I feel like they will be responsible. It would be nice if there were an island, as far as those that need that. If that could be arranged, that would be great. Otherwise, I think since we're already zoned with HC zoning, we could be in more jeopardy. If a bar were to go in there, we could be in more jeopardy at night, because I know a lot of the students, I know many times I did drive across if I had class in human sciences or on the northern side of campus. And the students nowadays, so many times, do go in the afternoon, or the classes are varied, and you don't know when students are going to class or not going to class. And cumulatively, we have students scattered throughout the unit neighborhood. But it's, it's very hard in this day and time, when our budget is like it is, that we turn down someone who wants to come in and add this kind of economic development and jobs to our neighborhood. So, I am speaking pro. As responsible citizens, we would be amiss to decline just under $100 million worth of development and jobs proposed as a project that sounds like it'll be very similar to what went in at Overton. We don't have people crossing nine lines, but we do have them crossing eight, coming across there by the stadium. And I just feel like that the highest and best use for this property, if they've figured it out where they've got plenty of parking and we've got people going out and slipping out Boston, we're not going to be affecting anything further to the west. And I think that, you know, we're going to lose our freedoms if we don't balance our budget, and this moves as a step toward balancing it. It also moves us toward being able to go in and do some other projects, as they mentioned earlier about the car washes. We do need, we do need car washes in these other areas, but I think the reason they're going in southwest Lubbock is that's where the people are washing the cars. And in these other areas, a lot of people are washing their own cars in the other type car washes. And it would be great if we had some of these going on to Parkway, and I think I have visited with Mr. Harris about developing off of Idalu Highway and Parkway, and, but we need the cash and we need the liquidity to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. Ms. Goodwin.
Hello, my name is Connie Goodwin. I live at 3109 20th Street. That's between Flint and Gary. I've lived there since the year 2000. Before that, I lived on 26th Street, three houses in Tech Terrace, off of 26th Street, off of University. And we had many, many tech students in our neighborhood and rent houses. We still do. And we've, we've always welcomed tech students into our neighborhood. That's not the point. The point is that this many tech students is, you know, I worry about the tech students, and it's the traffic and the parking. We still have a problem with Tech Terrace with parking, and we have all the little different neighbor, you know, little streets that, that vote on where they, you know, do you park on both sides of the street? Do you park on one side of the street? Da-da-da. This is going to be worse. I appreciate that they've changed it from 315 to 420 spaces, but that's just really not going to help a lot. This is Lubbock, Texas, and everybody has a car. And if they live there, I'm sure they're going to have a car because they're going to have to afford that place. And where are they going to park? And where are their friends who want to spend the night going to park? It's not just 421 spaces. So, the parking is a really, really big problem. Also, the traffic. You've got University and 19th Street, the busiest, you know, places in the world coming together there. You know, you're going to have to build one of those bridges, and that's going to cost, and who's going to pay for that, I wonder? 10 lanes of traffic, that is just not feasible. I've, I've been seeing people making U-turns at Boston and 19th Street, because if, if both the ingress and the egress is on 19th Street during rush hour traffic at 8 o'clock, at noon, at 5 o'clock, they're not going to get across to be able to go into the left-hand turn lane to go toward Tech. It's not going to happen. So, you know, they're going to come, they're going to turn to the right, and then they're either going to make a U-turn on 22nd, or they're going to go down 21st, 22nd, 23rd to Boston, to Flint, to Indiana, to try to get onto the Tech campus. And they're going to, on Boston, I can tell you, it's going to be a car train there to try to get on to the Tech campus. I appreciate it. We are not against commercial buildings. This is just the wrong fit for us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. That concludes our citizen comments for today. And I'll take up agenda item 5.1. The minutes for the February 11th, 2025, regular city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve item 5.1?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any amendments or changes? I see none. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. Minutes are approved unanimously. We'll now take up item 6 on our consent agenda, and there hasn't been a request to pull any items from the consent agenda prior to the meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there such a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I see none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, item 6, 1 through 6. My goodness, there are a lot of them today. 6.39, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. The consent agenda is passed unanimously. All right. We'll now take up our regular agenda, and we'll start with item 7.1. And we're going to conduct a public hearing with regard to a request for annexation from Thomas L. Cook and Deidre Deann-Williams Martin to annex an area of approximately 407.28 acres adjacent to the eastern city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of East Bluefield Street and east of North Guava Avenue into Lubbock's corporate city limits. As a reminder, the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from the applicant and members of the public. The council may also ask questions of the applicant or staff during this public hearing, but no discussion on the merits will be conducted by the council during the course of the public hearing. So, now I'm going to call, well, I was going to call on Kristen Sager, but I'm not calling on Kristen, to provide, provide a brief summary of this agenda item subject to our public hearing. Okay? Thank you.
Hello, mayor. Hello, council. I'm Greg Hernandez with the Planning Department, and this is a public hearing in first ordinance reading for the annexation at North Guava and East Bluefield. The applicant is Thomas L. Cook and Deidre Deann-Williams Martin, requesting to, requesting for the annexation of approximately 407.28 acres located in Section 43, Block A, and Section 2, Block D, 3, Lubbock County. The property is adjacent to the eastern city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of East Bluefield Street and east of North Guava Avenue. And I can take any questions.
Are there any questions, Ms. Harris? All right. I see none. So, thank you very much. I'll now open the public hearing for item agenda 7.1. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this request for annexation today? If so, please come forward. All right. I see none, so I'll now close the public hearing at 3:15 PM. I'll now entertain a motion to approve item 7.1.
No. Action.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All in favor of approving item 7.1? Please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. I hear none. 7.1 passes unanimously. All right. Move on to, is it, Ms. Harris going to provide this, or is Kristen going to provide the summary of agenda items 7.2 through 7.5?
Yes.
Okay.
These are going to be the second readings. We will start with Zone Case 437C. The applicant is Michael Sessions for Raymond &amp; Gonal Lemon, requesting a specific use for a manufactured home subdivision on a property zoned SF2. 39 letters were sent out and received one back in favor and zero in opposition. The property is located north of East Broadway and west of David Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the one in favor. Here's an aerial view of the property, showing to the north, east, and west a mixture of vacant land and, and homes, and to the south, agricultural land. The current zoning map shows it's the property surrounded by low-density, single-family. Here's a picture of the subject's property, as well as views to the south, west, and east. Here are pictures provided by the applicant. The proposed specific use is in conformance with the zoning ordinance. The proposed specific use is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along East Broadway, which is designated as a collector by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Thoroughfare Plan twenty eighteen. Staff has no objection to this request. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this request by a vote of eight zero zero, and city council approved first reading by a vote of six one zero. And I can take any questions at this time.
I see no questions, so move on.
This is zone case thirty-five sixteen. The applicant is Hugo Rehn Associates, Inc., for Elliott Earl Seko LTD. The purpose, requesting a rezone from single-family, low-density to heavy commercial. Forty-four letters were sent out. We received zero in favor and one in opposition. The property is located south of one hundred and fourteenth and east of University Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the one in opposition. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the north is future Circle K and Tractor Supply. To the west is a residential and commercial property. And to the east and south of this property are the city limits. The current zoning map shows the properties to the north zoned heavy commercial, the properties to the west zoned low-density, single-family, and auto-urban commercial, and the, and the properties to the east and south zoned, or outside the city limits. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial uses. Here's a picture of the subject's property as well as views to the south, west, and north. Here is a picture provided by the applicant showing what they're asking to rezone. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. The proposed zone change to the, to heavy commercial is in conformance with the designation and is appropriate at this location. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The property is adjacent to heavy commercial districts and the city limits, minimizing the impact on residential properties in the area. The subject property is located on University Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial, and one hundred and fourteenth Street, which is designated as a minor arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan twenty eighteen. Staff has no objection to this request. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of eight zero zero, and city council approved first reading by a vote of six one zero. I can take any questions at this time.
I see none. Move on to item seven point four then.
Okay. This is zone case one seven nine four dash K. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Community Christian Church, requesting to rezone from high-density residential to auto-urban commercial. Fifty-four letters were sent out. We received eleven back in opposition, one outside the notification boundary. The property is located south of ninety-sixth Street and west of Indiana Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the ten in opposition. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the north and west are townhouses, to the east is a church, and to the south is vacant land and townhouses. The current, here's the current zoning map, shows the properties to the east and west zoned high-density residential, the property to the south zoned neighborhood commercial, and the property to the north zoned medium-density residential. The future land use map designates this property for commercial uses. Here's a picture of the subject's property as well as views to the south, north, and east. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses, and the requested zoning would be appropriate. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along ninety-sixth Street, which is designated as a local street, and Indiana Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan twenty eighteen. Staff has no objection to the request. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the, of the request by a vote of seven one, and city council approved first reading by a vote of six one zero. And I can take any questions at this time.
Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you. I, could you go back to the one with the actual photos? Right there? No? Yeah, that's it. One of the residents, I believe, lives on ninety-sixth Street, a couple of them. How many feet away from their door or their, their area to this car wash would it be? Do you know?
I do not have that number.
I looked through the backup and I couldn't find anything. Do we have anything? Anyone that can tell us about how many feet that is?
The rideaway for ninety-sixth Street is, can be roughly about sixty feet, so that ninety-sixth Street right there would be about sixty feet. I don't know the actual, from the door to door. I don't have that information.
Is there any way to find out? Do we have anybody here from Mighty Wash? Yes, we do. Thank you. And then my other question is, I think somebody mentioned that east Lubbock and north Lubbock have no car washes? We do, just FYI. And there's one by the Walmart on, off of Avenue Q and Fourth Street. There's one on Fiftieth and Flint. There's another one on Fiftieth, and I believe it's Boston. And there will be another one on Fiftieth and University. And then, I mean, you know, we'd like for these folks to, to send us business in our districts, wouldn't we, Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
But we're not always selected, because I think someone said, send it to the poor neighborhoods. That's not quite the case. I just wanted to correct that comment from whoever said that. It's, there's a lot of working-class people, and several parts of our districts have been ignored, just to be frank. And so I just wanted to point that out. But did you find out?
Yes.
From door to door? What is the?
From the front door, the homes on the north side of ninety-six to the opening of the car wash is a little over a hundred and seventy feet.
And do you know how loud the vacuum cleaner?
I don't. And at, the planning and zoning commission, the Mighty Wash team that was here brought a sound study. I don't have that with me today, but, you know, one of the things that, that they wanted to reiterate at the P and Z meeting was that they're off, you know, they're not on when the business isn't open. So, like on Sunday, I think they're open from twelve to six or twelve to seven. So, you know, after seven o'clock, they shut the vacuums off. So, they're not just on all night. But I don't know the-
And it's, it's on an as-used, so it's not like just running the entire time, right?
I don't believe so, but I, I'm just a civil engineer. I'm not a, you know, don't work for car wash. I'm sorry.
You know?
Work for body wash. But, you know, some things that we tried to do after we talked with the residents, you know, we put this site plan together because we felt like it was necessary to kind of address some of their concerns. And so we tried to shift that, the car wash itself as far south of the homes on ninety-six as we, as we possibly could. And I think I mentioned that at the last city council meeting. And then putting the trees and the, and the fences up. It's not gonna drown the standout completely, but it'll, it'll help a little bit. And then we, you know, traffic was another big concern that we had heard. And so we put the driveway, the only driveway as far south on Indiana as we could get it as well. So, but to answer your original question, I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that. But if you need it, I can, I can get it to you after this meeting.
Okay. I have a question for our city manager. I'm gonna put him on the spot, but I know he probably knows the answer. From the entry of the Citizens Tower to the police department, what is that about? How many feet away is that?
If you give me just a moment and I'll, I think I can actually measure that.
We have a very smart city manager, so I know he's gonna be able to give us that answer pretty quick.
My, my brain lives inside the iPad.
He's gonna say, he's smart, but his phone is smarter, so.
Yes. Yes, Mayor, that's exactly correct. And that would be from the door of the tower to the front of the police building?
Mm-hmm.
It's right at four hundred feet.
So, about, could, from looking out at Citizens Tower, would it be midway to Patterson Parking Garage?
I think Mr. Cummins said it was a hundred and seventy feet door to door, so it would be just shy of halfway between here and the police building.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Awesome. I'll stick around.
Dr. Wilson.
Yeah, well, don't, don't go far. Was there, the discussion on the fencing around the property, just looking, it looks like they had proposed a masonry fence between the car wash and the church to the west-
Correct.
-but only a privacy, which I'm assuming was a wood fence.
That's correct.
That's to the north. Has that been discussed, that potentially put a masonry fence, which would help dampen sound probably better than wood?
That, that could be the case. You know, so, on the west side of the property, the side yard, the city UDC allows either a, I'm sorry, rear, allows either a masonry or wood fence. We're doing the masonry option there. And then on the north, the buffer yard that we're putting in, I believe is a type B, which is ten feet, but that requires a seven-foot flat top wood fence and then a certain amount of trees and shrubs as well. But, I mean, that's definitely something that we could consider. It's just not something that's required by the UDC, so. But definitely something that I think would-
Yeah, I mean, I think that would, that would be a, a compromise in the middle. You know, a masonry is gonna be more solid. They, they wouldn't, the neighbors across the street wouldn't see cars driving through that fence versus a wood fence. I think it would dampen the sound. I did go, I talked to Mr. Rose there, but I did go and sit, I have one of these out in my district that does actually sit right up against some houses over off of eighty-second and Homestead. And they had a, a wood, it was taller than seven feet. It actually looked probably closer to nine-feet fence. And I sat across the street from it with a window down. You can hear the noise.
Right.
I very seriously doubt, because I could not hear it through rolled-up windows, that they would be able to hear it in the house.
Right.
But I do think a solid fence would maybe even inhibit that even more. And it was just a kind of a constant machinery tapping noise. But I do think solid, so that might be something-
Yes, ma'am.
-to think about.
Absolutely.
Mayor, pro temp.
So, one more question.
Mm-hmm.
We, you know, the solid fence is great. Could we add a little bit more decorative, like trees, just to add additional? Just because I know one of the concerns was, I don't wanna be, have to look into the tunnel of the car wash, which I personally like driving through the car wash, but, you know, that's probably a different, if I had to see that every single day, it would probably drive me crazy too.
Right.
But maybe have some trees or something, just maybe-
Yes, ma'am. Sorry to cut you off, but, again, going back to the UDC, it requires both the fence and trees. So, we're gonna have to build both regardless, with our zoning, with the zoning across the street. So, there will be trees there. It may take a while for them to get to the height that would block the view. I don't know off the top of my head the height that they're required to be on the UDC, but there will be trees built there. You know, we have to build those by code, so.
Well, I think the one advantage is that, you know, as a newer development, where, like where I live, that car wash has been there-
Correct.
And it once, one, once mighty, what was it? Quick quack closed? Then it became Mighty Wash. And, you know, I didn't get a, a chance to say, hey-
It's the buffer yard.
Put some more trees-
Right.
-you know?
Yeah.
But they've done a pretty good job of maintaining it. And so, I know that Mighty Wash is locally owned, and my recommendation would be for you to relay that they need to maintain-
Sure.
-that area and put a little extra effort to make sure that they're being neighborly.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
I think I could second that sentiment. I know there's a difference between what is required by zoning and then what can be done and what's better to be done.
That's true.
And I think a lot of us share the concern of the people there to provide as much of a buffer on the sound as possible.
Absolutely.
I'm sure this won't be the only mighty car wash that's gonna be going in someplace around the city, but, you know, we would like them to be good neighbors-
Absolutely.
...to their neighbors. And so I think there's kind of an expectation here of the council that they give very careful consideration to that.
Yes, sir. I agree. Thank you all.
I can do that. Sit right now.
All right. Item seven point five.
This is zone case two nine one six F. The applicant is SK Architecture Group LLC, requesting a rezone from industrial park to neighborhood commercial park, or neighborhood commercial district. Twenty-eight letters were sent out and received one back in favor. The property is located south of eighty-second Street and west of Upland Avenue. Here's a notification map showing the one in favor. Here's an aerial view of the property. To the north is developed with commercial warehousing, to the east are developed with commercial offices, to the south is undeveloped land, and to the west are commercial offices. This is the current zoning map. Properties to the west, north, and south are zoned industrial park district, to the east are zoned office and neighborhood commercial district. The future land use plan designates this property for heavy commercial. Here's a picture of the subject's property as well as views to the south, north, and east. Here is a site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for heavy commercial land uses. While this request is more restrictive commercial district, it would still be appropriate along Upland Avenue and adjacent to existing uses. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The location is along Upland Avenue, which is designated as a principal arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan twenty eighteen. Staff has no objection to this request. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of eight zero zero, and city council approved first reading by a vote of six one zero. And I can take any questions at this time.
I see no questions, so thank you very much. I'll now entertain a motion regarding items seven point two through seven point five.
Mayor, I move to approve agenda seven point two, seven point three, and seven point five.
So, you wish to exclude the item seven point four from this motion?
Excludes seven, four, and seven six.
Well, seven six isn't up right yet.
Thank you.
Okay. So, seven, you have moved to exclude seven point four, to only move for approval of seven, two, three, and five. Is that right? Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving items seven point two, seven point three, and seven point five? Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Hear none? All right.
Mayor, I move to approve item seven point four.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item seven point four. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Further discussion on item seven point four? Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mayor. So, kinda when I looked at this, I, you know, my, my house is in almost the exact same position. I live behind a vacant lot on an arterial. And, you know, some of the arguments are, you know, the traffic and, and safety and everything like that, but, you know, we spend a lot of, we spend a lot of money on street maintenance. We spend a lot of money on our police and fire to keep our streets safe. So, that's, it's not so much that that would bother me, but, you know, if it was something behind my house, the constant hum of an industrial dryer would, would bother me pretty bad. So, that's, that's really the, the only problem I have with this. I, I, I think looking at a masonry wall on ninety, ninety-sixth right there might, might do something, but as it sets, I can't, I can't support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Any further discussion? All right. I see none. So, all in favor of approving item seven point four? Please let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
So, the motion passes six to one. Thank you. Now, again, all right, and we'll move on to item seven point six and for a brief summary of this agenda item. Ms. Harris.
This is zone case three one seven four dash D. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Texas District LCMS and Generator One LLC, requesting a rezone from sing, uh, low-density, single-family district and heavy commercial to high-density residential. Sixty-one letters were sent out. We received eighty-one in favor, seventy-two from outside the notification boundary, twenty-eight in opposition, six from outside the notification boundary. The property is located west of University Avenue and south of nineteenth Street. Here's a notification map showing, showing the letters we received. Since the written opposition from the property owners within the two-hundred-foot notification boundary exceeded twenty percent of the land area, a supermajority vote-
a supermajority vote of six out of seven votes will be required for the case to be approved. Here's an aerial view of the property. Uh, the properties to the north is Texas Tech, to the east is a hotel, to the west is a student center, and to the south is a parking lot and residence. The current zoning map shows the property to the north, low-density, single-family. Properties to the east and west, high-density residential, and properties to the south, low-density, single-family, and neighborhood commercial. This is a slide showing the SF-two zoning that we're rezoning in this request. The future land use plan designates this property for commercial uses. Here's a picture of the subject property, as well as views to the north, east, and west. Here is a slide provided by the applicant showing what the rezoning request is asking for, or what property is asked to be rezoned. Here are some uses allowed in the heavy commercial, as well as uses allowed in the high-density residential. This is not all the uses, just a couple of uses. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses. While the proposed zone change to HDR is not in conformance with this designation, it is appropriate in this location, as the HDR district does allow for a combination of residential, commercial, and mixed uses. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and is adjacent to the HDR zoning to the east and west. The subject property is located on, on Nineteenth Street, which is designated as a principal arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to the request. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of seven-one-zero, and City Council approved first reading by a vote of six-zero-one. And I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Right now, I'll entertain a motion regarding item seven point six. Do we have a, do we have a second, Mr. Rose, was that, or Mr. Collins? Okay, all right, is there further discussion at this time? Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked staff to pull some information for me, you know, after hearing one of the residents discuss safety, because safety is always an issue. I walked to Texas Tech from that neighborhood when I was a student. My daughter also walked from that neighborhood, and then I ended up moving across into another neighborhood, so then she had to cross Thirty-Fourth Street, walk to Thirty, I think it was Thirty-Second or Thirty-Third, take the shuttle, and then get on campus. So I know that neighborhood extremely well, but I wanted to make sure that I was looking at everything very objectively, because I think that's very important. And I know someone made a comment, and, you know, we do take an oath. And my oath and my commitment is first to do the homework so that it is equitable for every person that lives in that neighborhood, not just one segment over the other. There's no entitlement. It is, I am committed to being fair and objective. So on that note, I made it a point to ask some questions, and this is what I found out. First of all, the property is four-hundred-and-fifty feet from a pedestrian signal at Boston, and five-hundred-and-fifty feet from a pedestrian signal at University. Next, there is a continuous sidewalk to the signals at Boston and University from the property. The pedestrian crossings at University and Boston, Boston that is, are ADA compliant and were rebuilt in 2018. Both signals have pedestrian push buttons that will extend the signal link for pedestrians when utilized. Now, this timing can be adjusted by City Traffic Department as pedestrian traffic and volumes change. And then we can enhance the LED lighting, because if lighting is an issue at night, somebody mentioned, you know, crossing the street at night, I mean, I know your son got hit during the day, but you also mentioned at night, how would it be? And we can enhance LED lighting and, or, I'm sorry, we, enhanced LED lighting is being installed, that is, with the TechStop project along the Nineteenth Street corridor to improve vehicular and pedestrian safety. Speed limits, you asked, or you mentioned that it was forty-five speed limit? It's actually from Indiana to Boston, forty miles per hour. From Boston to Uni, east of University is thirty-five miles per hour. And one thing is that right now, the property or the street still belongs, no, I drove it. I didn't just ask staff, I made sure to drive, I drive it all the time. And what I found also is that we can do studies. And once the city council, right now it still belongs to TechStop, but Jared, when will this belong to the city of Lubbock, Nineteenth Street? When does that go into play?
It's likely still three years out.
Okay, so in three years, whether it's this council or others, we can amend that speed limit once it goes from TechStop to the city, so that's one thing. So it could go down to twenty miles per hour. And some folks mentioned pedestrian island, that's a great idea. And that could also be something that could be considered. The other thing that, as I drove, I also found out that if you go to Lubbock High, the students have parking across the street on Nineteenth Street, and they're minors. And so for me, I know it seems like it's unsafe and, and nine-lane, but I feel like we will be proactive, and we can be proactive, and we have been listening. It's not that we're not listening, it's just that there's so many things that have to be taken into consideration. It has to be fair and objective and beneficial to everybody, because, you know, somebody else mentioned about, I mean, seventy percent of that neighborhood is rental property, so I know that students are walking, I see them all the time. I had a business on Twenty-S sixth and Boston, I know the traffic, I know it well. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out, because I think that there's lots of, of, you know, misinformation that sometimes gets out there, and I just wanna let you know that the council is doing everything to address the request. And it's not that we're not listening, it's that lots of layers have to be considered when making decisions. And I just wanted to put that out there, and I appreciate you for being here. Thank you.
Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna tell everybody thank you for coming again to relay your concerns. I do wanna say thank you to Mr. Pearl Mutter, who's part of the developer team. Even after a positive vote in his favor at the last meeting, continued to receive pressure and even gave more concessions, and I think is really trying to listen and moved that pool off the rooftop, which was one concern, but also gave, that gave additional parking. So I just wanna say thank you. I know it's a tough process. I think it's a great project. I am in support of the project, but thank you, Mr. Pearl Mutter, for continuing to work with the citizens and the city of Lubbock and everybody here. I know you're not from here, but we, we commend you. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Pearl Mutter, I'd like to call you forward, if you wouldn't mind. I think you can maybe, you've provided us with some information here that we've been able to look at. I don't know that the rest of the folks here have been able to see it. Can you show us what, since, since we voted on this the first time, what changes have been made? Can you indicate those for us and, and talk a little bit about what you have proposed as far as changes?
Yeah. So, this is the, the ground floor, and the changes here were, as you can see, the pool is now at the ground floor of the courtyard. So again, completely internal to the, the building. And then what we've done is, this is now the fifth-floor rooftop. The pool, again, as I said, has moved, and there's no pool on top of the structure. And the resulting change is, we've gone from four-hundred-and-twenty-one spaces, I'm sorry, we've gone from a hundred and, sorry, three-hundred-and-fifteen to four-hundred-and-twenty-one spaces. So we added a hundred and six spaces.
Could you go back to your graphic showing the, the building itself? Okay, thank you.
This one?
Yes, yes. And so, as I'm looking at this picture, you have a red dotted line there at the fifty-foot setback. That is where, if I understand correctly, the building is at the forty-five-foot height at that point, then it steps back fifty feet from the property line to go up the remaining fifth floor, is that correct?
That's correct, and that happens at the fifth, oh, the fourth floor.
At the fourth floor level?
Yeah.
Okay, so you have four floors, three floors, or, and then two floors above that, or four floors and then one floor?
Yeah, that's, sorry, the top of the fourth, so I guess you could say.
All right, so you've added a new deck onto your, for your parking, is that correct?
Correct, and, and now it is five stories, which the building directly to the east, when it, where the part that it's abutting to, this, our same building will also be five stories, so it's the same.
Okay. And the, I don't think you've made any other changes. The parking lot on Twentieth Street stays the same. At the exit from that goes across into the parking lot, or the parking part of the main facility and out onto Nineteenth Street. There's no traffic that exits onto Twentieth Street, is that correct?
That's correct, no changes there, and maintaining that, as well as to direct residents to not go down the alleys and go through Nineth, uh, through the parking garage back onto Nineteenth Street.
And, and I think someone said that it was a zero lot line, but you actually do have a twenty-foot setback at the rear of your structure, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's incorrect. It is, there are setbacks as, in respect to UDC.
Just wanted to be clear about that. All right. So I, I think, you know, a lot of concerns that have been raised about this project is, you know, what we're doing here today is really voting on a, a change in zoning. That's, it's all we're doing. We're not voting on your project, so to speak. We're voting on a change in zoning that will allow you to build a project that's consistent with the zoning that we'll be voting on if that, if that passes. But I think in a lot of people's minds, their concern has been, especially concerns expressed to me, is they're not obligated, you know, to stick with this plan. They're not obligated to build the building the way they have shown it. They can build it however they are allowed to do within the HDR. And I think a lot of people are aware that I have a lot of problems with HDR as the way it is currently written. So my question to you today, and I know this isn't legally binding on you, but as a man of your word, will you commit to building the building as you show us with the setbacks and the parking and the pool where it is, and the access only to Nineteenth Street as you have shown it to us and described it to us?
Yes, sir, wholeheartedly. And the other thing I would add is, we've, we've invited the neighborhood, through Melissa, to be involved with all of our meetings with design going forward, to ensure that we're keeping in track with what we said we're gonna do.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, for me, this is a zoning matter, and it's, the question's always, is the requested zoning change appropriate for this location? And whether something's appropriate, it's always an issue of balancing the benefit of how a particular property might be developed under a zoning change, in this case to an HDR, against the impact that development might have on the properties that are adjacent to it, especially when that property is joined, is, uh, zoned, as it is here, as single-family residences. I think we all understand, and I see, hear this from the tech terrace residents as well, this property needs to be developed. And now, more than even before, I mean, the Save the God Bowl days are, are past. It doesn't exist anymore. It's a vacant piece of property for the most part, other than the Cafe J building that still stands on it. It's empty. It's a prime location to be developed. It's on a major thoroughfare. I know it is adjacent to it and abuts, uh, single-family residences, but it's on the widest street in our city. It's across from Texas Tech. Those things aren't gonna change. It's always gonna be an appropriate place to do exactly what they're planning to do here. I mean, people suggest, well, why don't we have a boutique hotel there? Well, nobody's come forward to develop that. I even had somebody suggest over the weekend it'd be a great place for an aquarium. Well, nobody's come forward to propose that either. You know, whatever's gonna be built there has gotta be something that someone's willing to build there. The issue is, what does the developer see as the potential of this property and what's its best use? Because without a developer, nothing will ever happen there. We, we don't develop. Developers develop. Over ten years, we've been trying to find a solution to this piece of property, and they failed to achieve any result that would produce something valuable and productive in moving something onto our, our tax rolls here in the city, until recent proposals for student development on it. The first effort by Up Campus several years ago failed, and I voted against it while I was a council member for District Three at the time. And I shared the concerns of my constituents. My main concerns, and I didn't share all of them, but my main concerns were three. Lack of sufficient setbacks to over, avoid overwhelming a, uh, single-family residences right across the alley with a building that could be seventy-five feet tall. Development of Twentieth Street, development on Twentieth Street that would allow traffic to flow onto that street, and a lack of sufficient parking. Now we have a developer here who's worked long and hard with a neighborhood association in good faith to address many of these concerns. And in fact, he's addressed all three of the concerns that I have, including coming forward today with more than a hundred additional parking spaces for this property. So, most of you know I don't like the HDR as it exists and our current, uh, UDC, and I'm trying to get that changed, but at the moment, this is what we've got. I'm gonna continue to try to address that, but Pinecrest's proposal has addressed almost every one of my single concerns and would have met the changes that I would like to have had in the HDR had I been able to get those amendments passed earlier. So as he has proposed it, and as he has committed himself to do today, it meets my concerns, even though it'll be HDR. It meets the concerns that I have with that, without having the amendments at this point. So the issues become to me, what do we do if we don't accept this proposal today? The next developer may not be willing to work with us, may not be willing to make these accommodations, or any adjustments that Pinecrest has been willing to make. I believe eventually student housing's gonna go on this area. There's actually several proposed changes to state law that will, will remove, or make much more difficult to get the supermajority vote as a requirement. If those pass, it'll be virtually impossible to stop the next person to come along, to wanna develop whatever he wants, seventy-five feet tall, virtually no setbacks, just point-five parking spaces per apartment. I can't accept that risk going forward. So I believe Pinecrest Development addresses the "is it appropriate?" question better than any other likely development to go on this property. As a city, we can't afford to have this property remain undeveloped and not producing the tax revenue that we need so that we can meet our obligations to all our citizens. I know this has been a tough issue. It's, I live in that district. I live not far from it, but I'm a realist, and I think at this point in time, this is the best we're going to get. And if we don't accept it, if we don't vote for it now, we stand a good chance of not, of getting something worse in the future. So for that reason, I'm gonna be voting for this change as well. Mayor Potem.
I'd like, like to ask you to post so that we can do our vote and the public can see it.
Certainly. Is there any further discussion? All right. All right, are you set up, Ms. Paz, to have a recorded vote? Jimmy? I never know who's in control of that. Jimmy's in control of it. All right. So, all, all in favor of approving item seven point six, please vote now. And if you vote no, point, well, it's seven to zero. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Having exhausted all items on the agenda, this meeting is now adjourned.